Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmember Costin.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five, citizens' input time, maximum of six minutes is set for input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. Anyone wishing to participate will utilize my podium to the left, your right. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. We will move on to item six, which is business. Six A is FY twenty-four budget discussion continue. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to have a presentation from our Finance Director, Mark Mason. Upon conclusion of last week's budget workshop, we took the input that we received on the items that were concerning you all. At the beginning of that meeting, we had made a mention of some additional state sales tax that was shared with us after we had released the City Manager's proposed budget. So we utilized those additional needs to try and accomplish the desires of council as discussed last week. And we'll present to you today how that worked out. Mark?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Councilmembers Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Pleasure to be here again today. So this is a much shorter version of the presentation that we gave last week. As the council recall, as we went through discussion following the proposed budget discussion from various department heads, as well as the information I provided you, there were several suggestions that came through from the City Council. And so we've taken that information and we've applied that to the excess revenue that we received following the issuance of the proposed budget. And so, real quick, we're going to talk a little bit about the additional revenue allocation. And we're going to talk about the options that we included and what was proposed by the City Council. And then we'll have a quick budget overview after that. The additional revenue amounted to a little over three million, $3 million. This came from a combination of resources, the half-cent sales tax information that came in from the state, as well as the municipal revenue sharing allocation, and the communication services tax allocation. On a net basis, at ninety-five percent budget, came in at three, $3,26,737. And so we took the opportunity and looked at the information that you had requested last week as a council, and we applied that through some of the requests that were made by the department heads. Specifically, we looked at public safety first, and then we went to the request that the City Attorney had made and plugged that into the equation. Development Services, we have a budget amendment that's coming through, and you had approved. And as part of that budget amendment, there's going to be additional personnel. So we're putting the additional personnel as well into the equation for next year. Public Works, there was a request for a million dollars in here for sidewalks. That is also included. And the remainder amount, which is the net amount from the $3,26,000, we have applied to something called city beautification. City beautification is wide-ranging. It could be additional medians. It also could be hiring staff to go out there and clean up along the medians of the city, as well as the right-of-ways of the city, which we have been doing over the course of the last couple of months. In addition, we added back in the fire rescue vehicle for fire impact fees. For us, it's a matter of, you know, the timing of when the fire training facility will be completed and the timing of purchasing the fire rescue vehicle for fire impact fees and when those will be available to us. And so, all funds proposed, there's a bit of a Scrivener error here. This should be one million, correction, one billion, ninety-six million, six hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine. That's the number that you see on the page that actually follows. Overall, the general fund proposed budget increased to two hundred and twenty-eight million. The proposed budget, again, includes a mileage rate of 5.3694, which is no change from the current year. And the fire service assessment increases from sixty-two to seventy percent recovery, which was discussed last meeting. Again, we have a five percent increase in water and sewer rates that was approved by resolution earlier in the fiscal year, five percent in stormwater rates. It's a seven-dollar increase, which, again, was approved as part of the proposed stormwater rate resolution. And we also have the increase in solid waste rates. Again, the overall budget, adjusted proposed budget is one billion, ninety-six million, six hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The, there's no change to the AMP, except for the addition of the fire impact, of the fire vehicle for, that will be paid for from impact fees. And so the general fund balance, as we discussed, nothing has really changed here other than the dollar value of the budget by adding some of the information that we've added in here with the additional police officer, as well as, I believe it's sidewalk crew that we added in here as well. The, so the net is a adjusted proposed budget of two hundred and thirty-one million, correction, I think it's two hundred and thirty-three million, four hundred, little over five hundred million, five hundred thousand dollars. First public hearing, again, is scheduled for Thursday, September seventh, 2023, at 5:05 PM. Second final public hearing is scheduled for September twenty-first at 5:05 PM. And we also have another, an additional budget workshop if the City Council so desires next week, two o'clock on Tuesday, the twenty-first, twenty-second, sorry, twenty-second. And that's it. If we have any questions?
Thank you very much. I'll now open up for any council discussions regarding either this information or what we received last week. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I just had a few things. Can I share all three and then you handle them in any way you want?
Your choice.
One was with the dollars that were, that have been set aside in the past for sidewalks. Certainly appreciative of the funding available to continue the expansion of our sidewalks through the city. If we could have a little, maybe just a quick update of whether we used up all of the dollars from last year and put all of the sidewalks in place that were planned? And if not, if those dollars are rolling over in addition to the additional dollars now for twenty-three, twenty-four, there says side for sidewalks. A similar thought on the parks, we had both the GO bond dollars being used for park creation. We had Sparkle budget for renovation of the parks that we currently had. And so as we continue those efforts, twenty-three, twenty-four, if we get kind of an update on where we are with those GO bond projects, estimated completion date, dollars left over being used for parks in twenty-three, twenty-four. And last was just a suggestion as it related to maybe defraying some costs with the thought that our utilities billing, many people choose to use e-billing where there is no mailing required, obviously no manpower in producing, the bills are getting them out, and then also in the receipt of payment being done electronically, doesn't require any processing checks or whatever. And so just a thought of either offering an incentive for using the e-bill versus traditional payment, or the potential to have a service fee for the postage and all of the other requirements to do manual billing. Those are just three points.
Okay. So let's go with number one, set aside in the past for sidewalks. Let's see, I think Persis Zambrano interim Public Works Director. So as we discussed in the previous workshop, we're trying to get contracting out, delivering of sidewalks. Let me see. Okay.
So Persis Zambrano interim Public Works Director. So as we discussed in the previous workshop, we're trying to get contracting out, delivering of sidewalks. Let me see. Okay, so we're trying to, we follow UEP. So we were trying to build sidewalks on North Two that was completed. That's the program we're trying to address. So we, council approved two point five million in 2021, two point five million in 2022. So we have about four million. I don't have the exact number right now, but we haven't spent the bulk of that money. We did build with our crew some sidewalk segments at the city's expense to provide pedestrian access to certain parks, like Cultural Park, Gator Circle. So we built those using our funding. But the one that we want to contract out is, are the segments that you see on the screen. We are only doing one side of the road. We think it will be in the five million ballpark, the cost to build those sidewalk segments. There are a couple in the South Cape, and that will assist the city to complete the one-mile distance from schools within the city when we complete this. So we have that money in reserve because we haven't spent them. Well, it's not in reserve. It will be in the.
It's in the project.
It's in the project. We have a project that we haven't entered into a contract, as we discussed the other day. So we're moving that forward.
So the thought was, is that in the hopes that we would be able to have the manpower, the time, to use those dollars that we've got set aside and the additional dollars that we have now? And if we didn't, would those dollars that we're setting aside for, the additional money setting aside for sidewalks now, would those roll over again, if you would, into 2025, if we aren't able to use them to complete the sidewalks this year?
In 2024, yes. They'll move into fiscal year 2024.
And then if we can't use those dollars for the sidewalks through 2024, will those dollars remain allocated to that effort for 2025?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with respect to the GO bonds, I think maybe it was three, four weeks ago, we had given an update on the GO bonds and the potential timing of completion. We'll have Mr. Kling come up here and give you a brief overview of what parks we have left to do and the ones that are currently in construction.
Thank you. Paul Kling, Director of Capital Improvements. So the Sunshade projects is, that's almost a hundred percent complete. Culture and Gators is complete, with the exception of some additional amenities and some of the landscaping that council asked for while running those numbers. Sands and Cove Yellow are almost complete, ready for potential groundbreaking. And Gefried and Del Prado are complete. Yellow Fever Creek and Lake Kennedy, I was there yesterday. Those are in process. We have Crystal Lake that is ready to go out to bid. That's in procurement. That's going out shortly here. Same thing with the Festival Park. And now Lake Mead is then the next park that may go out to bid. And we're still waiting for permits on Tropicana. That's a quick summary.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so with Operation Sparkle, we set aside funds for three parks this year. It was Storm, Burton, and Northwest Softball Complex. As a result of the storm that hit us in September last year, and the fact that we've been going through multiple inspections with FEMA, we haven't done anything on the Sparkle side until we have, the inspections have been done. And so we've been working on some of the improvements at some of the parks from a result of insurance, from the damages that occurred at some of those parks. However, the remainder of it is not. Now, with regard to Sparkle, we're bringing forward a contract on August thirtieth for Storm Football, and we're expecting that we will have contracts for both Northwest and Burton before the end of the fiscal year in order to tie up the funds that are associated with Sparkle for this year.
Okay.
Okay, so last but not least, let me talk about my stuff. So, and when it comes to utilities and incentives for getting on board, there's two parts to the equation. One, you can get a bill emailed to you, in which case you're not sending a bill through the postal service. And that's one part. Then you have the ability to go online and pay if you so choose to go online and pay, or you can just simply pay by bank draft, or you can pay by check, which is a multitude of different ways in order to pay us. Or you can just simply call us on the phone and do it through an IVR. All of which, in one form or another, helps to decrease the overall cost of processing a check or deposit through the system, but nevertheless, still takes an army in order to work up, you know, the processing of the information through our accounting system. So when you're looking at the cost of an emailed bill or a bill, let's just talk about a bill that actually goes through our system and is mailed to you. It costs about sixty-one point nine cents in order to mail one bill. Currently, we have twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine folks that are on the e-bill system, which represents twenty-seven point four percent of the total number of bills that we send out. We have seventy-two point six percent that still are postal, go through the postal service. We send out information on a quarterly basis with a little cut sheet that goes into the bill that reminds everybody. It's, you know, it's simply healthier for the environment if you get it on e-bill. And periodically, we have people that sign up for on e-bill. And we started out on the e-bill side when we flipped over to the new utility billing system. We actually had zero. And so over the course of the last year and a half, we're up to twenty-five thousand, close on to twenty-five thousand that are on e-bill. So at sixty-one point nine, sixty-one point nine cents and for, per bill, on average, that comes out to eight dollars for an account holder on an annual basis. Cost overall with the current sixty-four thousand accounts that we have, costs about four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to mail the bills on a budget that's a little over a hundred million dollars with regard to the utility system. And on average, on a monthly bill for, on an average monthly bill at a hundred and one point eight seven cents, sixty-one point nine cents, or six, I should say six, yeah, point six one nine cents is about point zero zero six percent of the total cost of the, or whatever the billing is. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't go look at an incentive. That's not the, that's not the point of the information I'm providing to you. It's really what type of incentive that we would be looking in for, and whether it's a monetary incentive or whether it's a penalty if you stay on paper bills. And so we can certainly look at that. But my experience with trying to do incentives in the past, it has not worked out real well, but we can certainly look at it again.
Okay. If I heard, George, it's about, it's about a half a million dollars a year?
For the current number of bills that we currently mail, yes.
Okay. Well, just my, my thought would be a half a million dollar savings might be a good thing to take a look at, somehow, some way.
And we can. And we certainly can do that.
Okay. Thanks.
Is that everything, Councilmember Steinke?
That's it. Thank you.
Got all your questions answered? All right, Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, so Mr. City Manager, I guess I would just ask you to elaborate on internally, I guess, your decision to backfill the three million dollars on projects that you'd previously deemed, well, you previously rejected or left on the cutting room floor, and why that, those decisions were made and whether they were made based on your observation of whether we actually needed them versus wanted them, versus whether that decision was purely because there wasn't money available. Do you understand the question?
Yeah, absolutely. So like I said, throughout this process, you know, there's a City Manager proposed budget, and then that gets released to you all. And then it's up to you all to determine whether or not I got the priorities the same as you see them in the organization and for the community. So as I went through the supplemental from the department heads, I went through the decision-making. I looked at the situation that was presented by each department. I looked at the funding that we had available. And I had to make cuts. I had, I could not approve everything. I think if you all remember, we went through those individually. There was some seventeen million dollars worth of stuff that just could not be approved, and we sent that over. Subsequent to the City Manager's budget being released, we received some additional funding. And at the last budget workshop, the council had expressed, not as a body, not as a whole, but some individual council members had questioned some of the holdbacks or the things that I did not approve, and made statements to the effect that those were priorities that they saw be included. So I thought in the decision-making process, I put my budget forward. Council was engaged us in a discussion. We did have the additional revenue set aside. So I decided to take those revenues and apply them to the individual needs that were discussed by certain council members. We're sitting here today. If that, again, just like I said at the last meeting, if we didn't get it right, the whole point of our budget workshops is to work together, you know. At the, come October first, there'll be a balanced budget, and I believe it should be a collaborative effort between the city administration and the city council. So if we got it wrong again, or if we got, there's a couple of tweaks that you all would like to have, today's the appropriate discussion.
Sure. The reason I ask is I don't know that there was a consensus with regards to the public safety components of this and the employees, the FTEs. And so, and I certainly don't want to undermine you if that, in your judgment and your discretion, because I also, on the other end, I don't think that when you made that decision to not approve those requests originally, that they were based on in any part financial. Because I think as a whole, we've spoken again and again about the importance of public safety. So I certainly would think that if you really deemed them necessary, that you would have found a way in their original, as part of their original request, to approve them if you saw fit. So reversing that back then, just because we have the money now, I didn't, I wanted to make sure that we weren't just filling that in just because it was a request from public safety and that, hey, we've got the money, so let's fulfill the request, when originally, that might not have been your original opinion.
I think that's a fair question, and it's really a what-if statement. So what if I had the additional three million before I released the budget? Would it look exactly like we have today? I wouldn't have had the input of council. So perhaps the FSA might not have been as high. But, you know, there were requests from council members expressed. You know, I found a way to accommodate those requests with those revenues, and so that's what we did coming into today. So it's really a, you know, hypothetical that I didn't have an opportunity to put together, but I understand the basis of your.
Yeah, my point is that those revenues could also be used for various other things if we didn't necessarily need those positions. That's the point I'm making. And so more particularly, I guess, an easier one to pick a bone with would be the bay doors. It's a couple hundred thousand, but I guess the question would be, is it something that's really a critical need? Is that, I guess, setting a precedent moving forward that we're basically obligating ourselves to retrofit the existing stations with these similar types of doors? Because, of course, when you multiply that, those numbers add up as well. So I don't know, just on a small scale, whether that would be something I would have immediately allocated that additional three million dollars toward. I'm not saying that you're wrong. We all up here might have a different opinion. But I mean, just poking at that a little bit, I don't know, for example, are the bay doors, are we putting them? Since apparently response time was one of the reasons that we had brought up the need. Are we installing the bay doors on the front and the rear? Because if we are, maybe we don't need to install them on the rear because that's not a time issue. And so could we save money there? Those are all small things with regards to, in the grand scheme of things, a miniscule project. But that's the reason I asked. If your basis when you originally requested these items was in some part material with regards to the need of the request versus just, I wish I could, but we don't have the money?
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, we spoke earlier on the sidewalk budget, and it was just said that we have money in that budget that wasn't spent yet. My guess would be that if we haven't spent what's in that account already, and we do have projects that we want to do, my guess is they would take six months to a year to do. Instead of adding more money in that sidewalk budget, why don't we take that money and put it into something where we can feel the results right away, like in curbing or beautification? Instead of just throwing more money in the sidewalk budget, when by time the money we have in that budget already is spent, will be into next year, where we'll have next year's budget to add more money to it. So just something I want to throw out there, you know, we have beautification that is talked about for years and years, how we're lacking with beautification. And we have this curbing machine now. We need a lot of curbing throughout the city. I think if that money was not put into the sidewalks, if there's already money in that account that hasn't even been spent yet, throw that money into things like that, that we can see an instant, you know, response and value added to our city right away. Instead of the money just sitting in an account that might not be touched for another year, when will be in the next year's account. Just a thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, just to touch on what you were saying, Councilmember Shepherd, on looking at this, the city beautification has about three quarters of a million in this new proposed, which I believe the City Manager said we could use for beautification, like cleaning up some of the medians and stuff like that. But what I think what he did was just added one million into sidewalks, which, as you know, we're deficient on sidewalks as well. So I get what you're saying, that we want to get these jobs done. But I think by having that million in here instead of scrapping it completely, is going to keep us, when we do catch up, still having that fund in there. Because as we know, the cost of sidewalks are getting greater and greater. And I'm glad that he was able to put it back in. But I'm also glad that he put almost an equal amount into beautification without it being earmarked specifically for sidewalks. So that could be replacing landscaping. It could be adding curbing. And you said some of it might be staffing. So it could be staffing towards, you know.
I agree. What I'm stating is, I wouldn't keep investing in sidewalks. What I'm saying is throwing additional money in that budget that's not even going to be touched because we already have a backlog, why not put that money to something else? What I brought forward is my idea is there might be other things that other councilments want to see accomplished with that money, that we can have instant gratification rather than just putting more money into an account when there's not even projects yet. There's already money in that account that hasn't been spent. Staff has showed us the projects, they just showed us the projects that they plan on spending that money, but it's probably going to take six months to a year to spend it. So to have additional money is just sitting there for a year and they're doing nothing. What I'm saying is I'd rather see them put towards something where we can have something done immediately, an immediate need. Doesn't necessarily have to be the needs that I brought up. There could be other needs.
Yeah. Gotcha. Thank you. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilman Shepherd. Because I know that when I was talking to the City Manager, Mike Ilch, and we were talking today, you were basically mentioning about the trees. So FEMA didn't replace any of the trees that we lost. And we do know the trees are very expensive. So the beautification, I think, is very important. That's what brings people here, right? Keeping that paradise feel. So with that being stated, if we have the money there, I'm in agreement that we start kind of getting Cape, having that beautification back, which is the question I wanted to ask you, Michael, is how many trees did we lose in the hurricane? And do you kind of, or a rough idea, and a rough idea of a cost to replace what we did lose that FEMA's not covering?
My rough idea, said with a joke, is it's more than one. I honestly have not had a chance.
You should run for office. You should run for office.
I have not had a chance honestly to discuss with our arborist Omar, how many. But I know he, for the CRA, went through the entire South Cape and documented losses. He had his inspectors go through all the medians and document losses. I believe they also tried to quantify in the parks documented losses. So I, I, I think the number's out there. But you know, this is a need that, you know, when you're prioritizing everything in the city, this is one of those, you know, you know, but for this additional money probably would not be, there probably would not be an extra seven hundred thousand to, to replace trees in, in the needs of everything. We would seek to get grants or we'd look for some outside sources. And the beautification needs that you all individually discuss are, are different. Some of you spoke during the, the budget retreat about planting more trees at the parks because the ones that are being built don't seem to have the quantity or, or size limit. Some of you, as Councilmember Shepard just discussed, is more about medians. Other ones are more about city facilities. So, and then there's, there's been discussion about, you know, pressure washing, just cleaning up areas.
Absolutely, yeah.
So there's, there's all kinds of beautification that everybody has been discussing that have previously been, you know, unfunded. And so I saw this as an opportunity to, to, to take what was not publicly discussed as an, as an individual need, but to create a, a new bucket of funding to address those items that would otherwise improve the appearance of our city in any, in any way we want to go about it.
Well, I just want to make it clear, I'm not wanting to file the money towards trees. I'm using that as an example. The FEMA didn't even replace that. That's just one major thing that we lost.
Right, they, they do not cover landscaping.
Exactly. So I guess, you know, feeding off of what Councilman Shepard was stating is it is very important that we get the beautification back up and running, you know, due to, you know, medians, or is it, you know, due to adding more shade in the park areas, adding prettier trees, adding more, you know, landscaping, whatever it may be. I guess my point is that, that's what I'm also looking at, not just all the trees, but adding more flavor back to our city. So.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Councilmember Hayden?
I think the beauty of the last couple of years that the sidewalk projects and the median beautification projects have been able to work hand in hand with each other to improve quality of life for the city. I don't want anybody to get the impression that because we've allocated a million dollars for sidewalks or proposed, the sidewalk project work has stopped. It hasn't. I believe it was noted in last week's presentation that we did about fourteen miles of sidewalks. Can somebody update me so that no one gets the wrong idea that we're not continuing to, to build sidewalks in our community? Is there someone in Persidis? Can you update us on the projects that are currently in the works?
Right now, we have the crew building sidewalks on Miramar. This is a CDBG granted project. As I mentioned recently, we built links to Cultural Park, to Gator Circle. We, we finished the one on 10th. Yes, they don't stop. I mean, we have multiple. And as I also mentioned, with the projects that we are trying to get out to a contractor, we will complete the sidewalks within one mile and then we will move to the two-mile radius.
And we're within what, maybe a year or two of finishing that, those sidewalk projects within a mile of schools?
Once we contract.
Getting pretty close, right?
Yes, we're getting close. Once we contract these eight mile worth of sidewalks with outside assistance, then we will be there. Also, we did sidewalks on Ceres, connecting to the Charter School North. We're working on, also with our internal crews on sidewalks on Northwest Fourth Street. That's the, the roadway that connects between Ceres to Chiquita. So yes, we have a plan that we're working in tandem with having the same manpower doing curbing.
I think, you know, a few years ago, our sidewalk projects were mainly funded by grants and we were falling behind. So now that we've been able to at least catch up and continue with these projects, it's because of the council's commitment to safety as well as beautification, these projects have been able to continue. We don't know what the economy's going to be like in the next couple of years. We don't know if these types of funds will be available to us. You know, this grant funding that we have, you know, that's, that's where it, where we're at right now. We, you know, we have to fund it through our general fund at, at the moment. So to risk not continuing the momentum of a project that we know back in 2016 told us that only eight percent of our roadside sidewalks and the gains that we're making now, I certainly wouldn't want to be for not keeping that money in there because at some point over the next year, we're going to catch up. And, and I also don't want anybody to get confused that these median projects can be done overnight either. They take time to do, to build plans, to get people that may want to invest in, in them in the community besides what, what we may want to provide. So I think the fact that we're continuing to fund these projects, medians or sidewalks for our city needs to continue because it does go back to quality of life and public safety. You know, I don't want Lee County to continue to be leading the state in the number of pedestrian and cycling deaths or Florida to be in the top three in the country in the same statistics. So if our city can do our part to help lower those numbers, they're high, they remain high for our city. And every project that we're able to finish is important to our safety and quality of life. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I think, got a couple other lights on, but those individuals already spoke, so I guess I'll jump in here real quick first. I had a couple of questions on these topics and then what was in the previous, I think it's important, so we know exactly what was in the previous proposal, city manager's proposal when it comes for sidewalks and median beautification. Let's take the sidewalk discussion first. First off, I know that we have two funding streams to complete sidewalks in the cities. One is like presented here today through the general fund and the other one's grant opportunities that we have. So let's talk about how much monies for FY24 are we expecting for grant opportunities first for sidewalks? And then after that, we'll expand that discussion with the general fund dollars.
Finance will have the grant numbers budgeted for next year.
Yep. And also what have we put in the budget for sidewalks prior to our budget discussions? What that dollar amount is that was initially put in the FY24 budget?
We have 1.3 million dollars in for grant-funded sidewalks and zero for general fund-funded sidewalks.
We had allocated some dollars towards sidewalks, I thought, in the original FY24 budget?
No.
Maybe, none at all?
Zero.
Zero?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that, that changes my perspective a little bit.
We, we, we had discussed, because we were behind, you know, behind on getting this year's allocation done, kind of just take, using this year kind of as a, as a pause. And then at one point, we thought that we would be able to, to put some additional money back into the sidewalks after the July first numbers came out, but we, we weren't able to make that work.
Okay. All right. And let me make sure I have a clear understanding, what I get out of the earlier discussion is in FY22 budget, we put 2.5 million dollars in for sidewalks. And then FY23, we had 2.5 million for a total of five million. But it sounds like we've only spent about one million out of that. Did I hear that correctly from Persidis when she was up here?
Approximately one million.
And then my next question is, so we got about four million sitting there. So in two years, we've only spent a million dollars. What, what do we think a good guess would be, how much we're going to spend in FY24 budget? And the reason I ask that, I guess I'm kind of like some of my other colleagues. I don't mind putting dollars at something if we can get something accomplished, but if we have a two-year track record where we've only spent a million or five million, but we keep throwing money at it and we have a lot of needs in our city, I'm just wondering why we're doing that. So I want to make sure that if we got four, we're going to add another million, can you convince me that we're going to spend five million dollars between now and FY24?
I, I think we could have spent the four million. The issue was it was not a good unit price bid. So we, we could have issued, I think the unit price bid came in at like eight?
Sixteen.
Sixteen million. So for those eight miles, it was basically two million dollars a mile. So I mean, we, we could have spent the money and contracted with a contractor, but it would have been two million a mile.
Okay.
And to us, that's just, so we, we have a, we have to balance, you know, the council's priority of, we want sidewalks put in with, are we getting a good price? So we have conflicting kind of public interests that we run into when it comes to executing. And so that's where we wound up with this year. It went out for bid, all, all eight miles that were out there went out, but what came back was just astronomical. And you know, obviously, you know, we have issues with the hurricane, issue with labor, issue with, you know, concrete delivery, you know, timeframe to deliver eight miles of sidewalk. So they're pricing in, you know, escalators and labor, escalators and material. So I, we could have scaled back the quantity, but I don't think we would have been in, looking very well if we had awarded two mi, you know, two miles of sidewalk for four million dollars. So it becomes one of those, hold on a second, what's going on in the market? Get with the vendor, find out why they bid so high. So I, I don't think it was an issue of could we have spent it? I think we could have, but it, it just wasn't prudent use of funds.
It sounded like we were getting a good return on our investment, so.
So we, if you did appropriate this, we would just, the bid, the amount, the quantity would be, would be more. But we still have to make sure we're getting good, good use of funds.
I understand that. You know, my thing is, I just want to make sure that we're just not putting monies in a pot that we're not utilizing when we have other needs throughout the city. So that, that's the only thing I want to make sure. But I didn't hear really an answer to my question. Do you think that we're going to be able to spend five million dollars between now and, and the fiscal year 24?
In fiscal year 24?
We are retooling the, the proposal to go back out on the street.
Okay. All right.
If we, if we end up with something different that is, again, two million dollars a mile, I mean, we know what it costs us to build sidewalks. We've done this before. Listen, we, we can always shift delivery methods. When, when Challenger Middle School was constructed along Trafalgar, there was an incident where a child was struck on a bicycle there and, and every, the council said we need sidewalks immediately on Trafalgar. And we went and hired a contract crew of, of temporary staff just to build that sidewalk. So if we still believe that that's the best option to get, to get it in the ground and for the cheapest cost, we may have to rethink how, how we're approaching delivering the product.
Right.
So we're, we're open to options. But they are redoing the bid package to try and get a little bit tighter bids or a little bit market centric. But we, we won't know until they come in.
And I guess it's always on the table, since we do know what it cost us to do it in-house, if worst case scenario, even if we had to hire an additional crew and it's cost effective and we can get it done cheaper, I guess that's an option as well.
Yeah, that's what we did on Trafalgar.
Yep. Okay. All right. You know, I have no problem supporting the extra million dollars as long as we can show a return on investment when we put monies somewhere. But I will say, next year, this will definitely be one item that I'll be taking a look at closely because I don't want to have five million next, next year and we have this discussion, we got four million sitting there. I wouldn't advocate putting any more monies to that initiative until we, until we get that number down and spend that monies. So, you know, I'll support it for this year, but I will look at it fairly closely next year to see where we are. Because our track record the last few years hasn't, hasn't been a very good one, when you take a look at the expenditure aspect of it. Median improvements, where were we prior to the budget discussions with adding this 774? Where's that put us?
We have a million thirty thousand that was set aside for median improvements. We also had the 300,000 for basically to go out there and replace things as well as, yeah, 400,000 for curbing.
And then we're going to add the 774 for a variety of city beautification type projects?
774 for a variety, yes.
And I, I kind of agree with Councilmember Cummings a little bit. I know we lost some trees throughout the city that we all know that FEMA will not reimburse. So that's definitely something I think we should take a look at and make sure that, you know, with this extra monies here that we're allocating, maybe that's something we could look at to make sure we can get our existing medians back up to par, to pre-hurricane conditions. Moving on, the three firefighters, minimum staffing, says 380,000. When does that staffing occur? Is that right after the fiscal year begins here in October or is it later on in the year?
Immediate.
Immediate.
It's to get the, it's to get the fire department to a minimum staffing.
The 425 for the bay doors. My recollection of the discussion that we had last week was, this was more than a want than a need. I think that we had asked, and I'll let, I'll let the fire chief maybe refresh my memory if he would like to, but it sounded like all the doors were in working order, it was just a different style door that we wanted to put up. If I recall correctly, the 425 is just one station as well, so they were pretty expensive. So I guess my question is, do you feel this is really a need or is it a want?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief. So specific to the bay doors, so response times is a, is a part of this. Our doors go up now, they're not super slow, but they do, they do go up. The biggest issue here with this that we've seen is that we do manage a number of doors at our numerous fire stations across the city and especially our old ones, they break frequently and then it's expensive to keep them going. So this is more of an effort to reduce operating and maintenance costs. We've talked to a number of folks from around the, another, number of fire departments from around the country that have had these doors for 15 years and have spent nothing on operating and maintenance costs. My staff is giving me costs of what we spent on our maintenance contracts with, for our doors the last, last year. So this is what this effort is, is an opportunity to try and make an investment to reduce operating and maintenance costs in addition to the other benefits of getting them open a little bit quicker and, and a nicer aesthetic with that. The 425,000 is an estimate for one station. I think it's a conservative estimate, but we wanted to make sure there was enough there to make sure that happens. But that was for six doors and that would approximately do one station.
Need, not a want?
I think it's an investment into reducing our operating and maintenance costs, something that, you know, I think as a city, we're going to function, our trucks are going to run down the road if we have these doors or not. But it's just an effort, like I said, we're spending a lot. We have our older stations, we're built in the early nineties, still have some of the original doors on them. And so we're just investing quite a bit of money into keeping those going. So that's just what the effort was.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the one patrol officer. I think that's pretty straightforward. I think there was one officer that was cut, so I, I agree with that. Increase in the city attorney's budget. If I recall correctly, it was more than the 250, Mr. City Attorney, that was actually requested. I think the 250 may just be the salary component, is that correct?
No, 250 is everything.
Was that everything?
That is everything. That includes the salary component, all the benefits associated with that, and also I think you have other separate line items. One is technology, one is travel, and one for training.
Okay.
Associated with, you know, that aspect of it.
Yep. Soon as I asked the question, I remembered the answer. If I recall correctly, it was about 229,000. If you added up the salary and all the benefits, was about the component for the salary increase.
Two twenty or two. Two twenty or two thirty-six.
Yeah, so thereabouts.
Thereabouts.
You know, one of the things that we talked about last week, and you did provide a little bit of data today. Not necessarily the exact data, I was looking for the second paper that you gave me today was a little more helpful. You and I had a discussion today on that. I know that here at the city, we are in the process of doing a classification and compensation study. My understanding should be done end of September, sometime in October. You know, like we have in the past. Any salary discussions that we have made a decision on, it was strictly based on data that we've either received or methodology, the seventy-five percentile methodology. I know we've used that as long as I've been here. So that data is kind of critical for me to see where that seventy-fifth percentile will land us, not only in your department, but all of the non-bargaining employees that are a part of that compensation and classification study. For me personally, I have no problem taking the two fifty, kind of setting it to aside until we have that study completed and then see exactly how we are going to allocate that two fifty. Actually, it's a little less than that, you know, because the two fifty has some of the office equipment and things like that. Take that out, I don't have a problem with proving that. But just the compensation aspect of the request, I think we should, for me, I would like to see the study first because in all honesty, that dollar may be higher than what you're asking for. It could be more monies.
It could be, but, and I was very conservative in the number that I proposed, and I did that intentionally, recognizing that, you know, this is a shift, this is an adjustment, and recognizing that I've been having the opportunity to at least see some of the salaries that are out there, and more importantly, in Lee County. So that's why I try to keep it conservative, at least for this first budgetary process. I'm new, didn't want to give too much of a sticker shock, so I was trying to be very mindful of that.
Right.
And I just know what the numbers are out there. So I was trying to be conservative in that regard, recognizing where the council wants the office to go, where I want the office to be and to accomplish that goal.
And I think we're on the same page, I told you that earlier today. I think when you take a look at the dollars, to me, it's pretty obvious. I just want to make sure we get it right, we got the data to really show where we need to be. I just don't want to kind of throw a dart in the darkness and see where it hits.
Yeah, and as I, and I'll be more than happy to convey that to all of you at this point in time, you know, it's something that I'm going to have to evaluate in terms of the office and to really address, you know, where we intend, where I intend the office to be in terms of its expertise and its knowledge and the ability to work with all the individual departments. And that, to me, is critical. And that's going to really shift and set the goals of the office and the city as far as I'm concerned. That's, I'm telling you that right now. So I will be evaluating all of that aspect to ascertain, you know, what is the best mechanism by way of which to accomplish that? And that's going to be done through the dollars and cents.
Right. So for me, for that particular item, like I said, I have no problem adding it into the budget. For me, I'd like to kind of put it as a placeholder. And then maybe once the compensation and classification study is completed, you may be able to get us a little more information on cities similar size, exactly what the attorneys, one, two, and three. It could include paralegals, I don't know if you're looking at your administrative staff, I really don't know. That's the only reason I'm a little hesitant, because I don't exactly know the plan that you're looking at. Not that I'm trying to micromanage you or your department, but before I allocate dollars, I'd like to have a good understanding what I'm allocating, that's all.
I understand.
I think that could be achieved, you know, probably the first part of October once the wage study comes back. And then we could have a committee of the whole meeting and have that discussion. And there again, we may find it, we may have to look at maybe the subsequent years, maybe trying to get that dollar amount up to where you think it needs to be.
Well, let me assure you of the one thing. If the salary and wage study comes back and it's higher, I have no intention of asking for more. I really don't, I'm telling you that right now. I did this for a reason, recognizing where the other municipalities that I looked at. So even if it were to be more, I have no intention of seeking that. Certainly, I will address that in the next budgetary process, but I'm not doing that now. That's why the number you see is the number you see, and that's the number you're going to get, even if it's more. So that is just what I'm, the way I'm viewing it.
Alright, thank you very much. Move on to the rescue unit vehicle, I think we took that out and then we've added it back in. So I'm glad to see that. Mr. City Manager, you and I had had a discussion. As we know, these particular units, we get a little quicker than we do our fire, our regular fire trucks. Fire trucks are taken about forty months, these type of vehicles are about twelve. I know that the chief's long-term plan is to try to get one of these particular units up and running each fiscal year for the next several years. And I know you and I had had a discussion possibly, especially since you don't have to pay for it until you take possession or you get the vehicle, possibly being a little proactive in ordering two vehicles instead of one. Where did you find yourself? And I know you had talked about some other fleet needs as well regarding that.
Yeah, we have budgeted in there one, with this go-around. And we also have on tomorrow night's agenda, purchase of another unit, but that's a full pumper.
Right.
So we're trying to be proactive where we can gain. But this, as we sit here on this one, it's funding for one, correct, Mark?
It is. And just as a reminder, we realize that the actual cash out the door doesn't happen until a future period. However, you have to have the cash available when you actually order it. And so the funding needs to be available when we order it because we're appropriating something. And so we're appropriating funding in order to be able to purchase it at some future date.
Okay.
That ensures that the funds are available when you actually make the order as opposed to ordering something and then maybe you don't when it's done.
Right. Yeah, my thing is when it comes to public safety, you know, our police and fire, we all know that it takes a while to get an individual up and running. What I don't want to happen is we find ourselves, because of the times that we are in when it comes to purchasing vehicles, I'd rather be proactive than reactionary. I don't want to, you know, bring five police officers on and they're going to have to wait eight months to get a car. So that's the only reason I bring that up, you know, so. And I know that's probably with a lot of things when it comes to our fleet, not just public safety, but public safety, you know, as we all know, that's a priority. So that's why I mentioned that. And that's all I have. So I will go to Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Shepherd brought things around based on my initial questions. And what my, kind of what my wonderment was is if we had more money set aside than hands could do the work, so to speak, whether it was our own hands or whether it was hiring third-party contractors to do the work. And when it was said that we're just looking, putting a pause on the sidewalk money, if you will, not having any in the budget for this year and then placing this million towards that, the pause would only be in additional funding, not a pause in the actual work itself. The work would still continue. And as I understand it from our conversation yesterday, the actual, our own hands, our city hands that are doing the work, that kind of got split between the curb crew and the sidewalk crew, which may have slowed down the amount of sidewalk that could be done with those same hands, so to speak. And that might have been one of the reasons why the dollars weren't spent on the sidewalks, because we put the actual physical ability to do the work more toward the curbing efforts? Is that right?
That is correct. We're trying to, instead of having two dedicated sidewalk crews, we're trying to have one dedicated sidewalk crew that can attack the grants. One crew would be shifted over to the curbing. That would be ahead of the landscaping and the median improvements. And then we were going to lean on the private sector to fill in the funding gap for... The funding for sidewalks is fairly consistent with grants, typically are getting grants every year. The amount of the general fund money we get year over year differs. And so as you see today, there's a discussion about possibly not having it. So when you have that amount of volatility in any service provision, you know, having full-time staff, you know, they need a routine amount of work every day, right? And so if that's volatile and fluctuating, we're not really suited well for that type of situation.
Okay. And so with that being said, then the additional million dollars that's set aside for sidewalks, if in fact we don't have the hands and the capacity since we're working with curbing and median improvement and whatnot, if those dollars could be put into additional trees in the parks, like has been already mentioned with the thought that FEMA didn't, you know, didn't provide any replacement for all that we lost. If we need more than that, seven seventy-four, I would also support, as we've heard up here, those dollars being slid over towards that. If we don't see ourselves being able to actually do the work that that million dollars would provide for sidewalks, instead of just rolling it over into the next year, I'd rather see it in a more immediate, you know, recognizable use through enhancing our parks, enhancing additional trees in our medians, beautification of the medians right-ofways. So that's just where I came out on that. And the last was from this backup material that we got today as it relates to the attorney comparisons and whatnot. Do we have a box similar to this that is where we sit right now, Cape Coral, that matches these six boxes for comparison?
For, in the sense of what it is, the amount or the percentage?
Right, like it says Fort Lauderdale and then it has, you know, the different breakdown.
Yes, so in terms of the total overall budget compared to what it is for the city attorney's budget, it's what I'm seeking based upon the additional two fifty is point two four of a percentage point.
It is how much?
Point two four of a percentage point.
Okay.
Right now, as it stands, if you back out what I'm asking, it would be point two two percentage, point two two of a percentage point. I'm asking for an additional point zero two of a percentage point.
And so when I look at these other ones, I'm looking at point five nine, point five two, point three nine, point six nine.
Tallahassee is the closest one, we are below Tallahassee. If you were to adopt my budget as of right now, what I'm asking for, it'll be point two four.
So we would still be the lowest on this page?
We would.
Okay.
And again, I was very conservative in the number, I did that intentionally. I'm new, thank you all for having me here. But I also wanted to be very mindful that, you know, there's a one point one billion-dollar budget. I get it, it's a big deal. And I certainly recognize that, you know, there is going to be a shift. So I was being very conservative in that number, recognizing where my staff is and where other municipalities are. I included Miami Beach because I did the budget there. I'm very familiar with the budget there. And I know how much staff is there compared to how much staff is here and where their budget is and where my budget is. Their staff is substantially more and they have a less budget. And we're talking about a municipality that's three by five miles. So I just recognize the legal issues. And where I'm envisioning taking this office is to an area where me and the city manager work and make sure that all of the legal issues are accomplished.
And the reason why I wanted to make sure I was understanding this correctly is because I'm with the mayor from the standpoint that if even with your proposal, we're still too low.
Yeah.
Then we need to address that. I mean, we're a big city, we've got a lot of concerns, there are a lot of legal issues. We need to have the best of the best that are representing our citizens and our city. And even if with your proposal it's still too low, then we need to look at reality and allow the funding that we need to be the best of the best.
And I'm very mindful of the fact that space-wise, I'm limited in space. So I certainly understand that limitation, I'm very mindful of that. That's something that I'm going to have to delve into over the next fiscal year. But at this point in time, I'm just trying to recognize the market. And this is the first step in recognizing the market. And then over the next year, I can then address some of the other concerns that I have in terms of being able to meet staffing requirements. Because at this point in time, there is no space. I don't know if any of you have been there, but it's limited. So while I recognize that, you know, the, you know, and I'm going to go back to my former place, City of Miami Beach, they've got a staff of twenty-four attorneys. Their budget is seven hundred and eighty-one. They're actually increasing it by three full-time employees this upcoming fiscal year. So, but they have the ability to have space for those attorneys. I don't have that. I don't have that without there being a bigger discussion. So all I'm, at this point in time, trying to do is to at least make sure that I retain who I need to retain and then with certain people leaving, such as Brian, that I'm able to bring them in. Because right now, across the river, I've got a very competitive entity that I'm very mindful of.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, this is good conversation. What we're learning is the value in spending the money properly and at the right time. And what we don't see is the cost of when we don't invest in things, then we feel the fire. So a lot of things came up. So another councilman talked about sidewalks and it came up, our city manager stated that we overpaid to have a stretch of sidewalk done because of the need, because of the danger, we overpaid on a stretch. And then we were also educated on that when bids went out for future sidewalk, the price was just off the charts. And we're all learning as citizens that after a hurricane, that we're all taken advantage of with the price of roofs and price of things that we've all experienced from the hurricane. So if you're a citizen that wants a new roof because you want to change the color, it's not a great time to invest in a new roof because you're going to pay triple what the normal price is. And I believe that's what we're going through with the sidewalks. We have companies that saw that we overpaid on a stretch of sidewalk and then the city asked for them to bid on future sidewalks and the price even escalated more. But it escalated more not just because we over, we might have overpaid a bit on the past project, but because of the times we're in right now, there's no one even available to do the jobs. So a lot of contractors are just throwing crazy numbers out there. We're all witnessing it with all different projects that we're trying to get done at our homes and our businesses, that when we ask for a bid for plumbing, electric, concrete, whatever it is, the prices are just off the charts. What I want to us to look at, you know, I gave the example of throwing it towards beautification because that's what we're told by all these different studies that are done on our city. It's been coming up for twenty years that we lack beauty, that, you know, Cape Coral's great, but, you know, it needs to spruce up. So I'll bring up some other things. I went on a tour of the charter schools the day before, two days before school started with the city manager. And the reason he brought me there to look at the schools is because last year when schools let out and they went on summer vacation, I had mentioned to the city manager, man, our schools are looking rough. I mean, the charter schools were looking bad. There was literally lights hanging from the ceiling, electrical lighting outside and inside. The buildings just looked bad. And when I went there for the tour, you know, a couple of days before school started, just the buildings being power washed, I thought they were repainted. I literally thought we repainted the schools. So, and he showed me that light fixtures were being replaced and things like that. What I want to bring to our attention is if I'm seeing that right now we're overpaying for sidewalks and our staff is diligently working on fixing that problem, we have money in the account that hasn't been spent yet and we're looking at adding more money in that account, I don't want that money to sit stagnant when I know there's other things out there that are needed, you know? I brought up beautification, well, there's others. Just go to the CRA, just look at our city in general, do look at some of the other buildings that we're responsible for. There are some other things besides the charter schools that really looked rough, that need some attention. So what I'm saying is... So what I'm saying is, I'm not saying it has to go to beautification. What I'm saying is some of these other things that we're letting deteriorate, the longer they deteriorate, it's gonna cost that much more when staff tells us next year, hey, we need to fix this up or we need to fix that up. And when we say, wow, why is it costing that much? Well, you know, we, we didn't touch it for this many years. Look at the yacht club. That's a perfect example. We didn't touch it for what, 40 years? You know? So what I'm saying is, you know, I've been down to downtown area and I walk down the streets there and I see some stuff that looks pretty rough, that's pretty embarrassing. And I know it doesn't cost millions to fix it or to just spruce it up a little bit, like was done on our charter schools. We didn't spend a fortune on our charter schools, but we did enough to make it look, wow, you know, this looks a lot better. We fixed the lights, we power washed the buildings, the place literally looks like it was repainted. Our manager told me we're gonna do some touch-up, there's some other things we're gonna work on. That's, that's what I'm trying to let my other councilmembers know about. We have this money, rather than it sit in this account, it's not gonna be spent. Even though sidewalks are important, until we get to the point where we can buy sidewalks at a fair price, I don't think we should just pay 10 times the going rate because it's important. I don't think any of us privately would do that at our own household when it comes to spending money out of our, our own accounts. To just say, oh, well, it's important, let's overpay and pay 10 times the going rate. So, and I, and I don't feel that our staff's gonna do that. I think our city manager, he already stated he's working on that. What I'm saying is let's look at some of these other things around the city that we can throw some money at to make our appearance look better. I mean, this is, you know, this is our reputation. I, I know a lot of us have read articles that are written about Cape Coral. I don't want to repeat what's in these articles, but the same things keep getting repeated in all these different articles. We had a past city manager that paid a company to do a study. What did they tell us? You know, so what I'm saying is, instead of letting money sit stagnant, let's use this money to spruce things up. Doesn't have to be for trees, doesn't have to be for medians. I'll bring up another one. I found out that staff gave me what streets we're gonna repave that are on schedule. We are on schedule to repave Cape Coral Parkway from Jakita to Sands. So what I would like to see done is if we're gonna repave that stretch from Jakita to Sands, let's get our curbing machine out and curb all them medians. Let's not repave that stretch and now when we repave it, paving we're educated on that we usually don't go back for another 20 years. I think I can make that statement, that when we repave roads, we're not touching it for 20 years. Will we really want to go back and put curbing on in Cape Coral Parkway after we just repaved it? So that would be another thing that we can talk about, that maybe we want to spend that money on curbing for our curbing crew to go ahead and put curbing on the medians on Cape Coral Parkway. It is the entrance to our city. Get the curbing done so then when we, when this curbing, when this paving project takes place, wow, guess what? Yeah, we damaged the street putting the curbing in, but, but here we are. What's coming is new paving for Cape Coral Parkway. So what I'm saying is sometimes it costs more when we don't spend our money wisely. Sidewalks are important. They keep our citizens safe, our children safe. But at the same time, if the money's sitting there because we're trying to fix the problem of cost, we're trying to fix the problem of how it's executed, if we're subbing it out, if we're doing it internally. But what we learned here with conversation is that the money's gonna be stagnant. Is all I'm saying is take that money. There are other things around the city. There are seven other councilpeople here besides me that can bring up other things that they see that they're not happy with around the city, that look ugly, that just need a little sparkle done to them, that we can use this money for. And, you know, so I won't beat a dead horse anymore, but I think the Cape Coral Parkway idea is another one, but there are many more. There are many more. And I can tell you that I was very happy with what I saw at the charter schools. It was a big improvement and I'm sure that the expenditure wasn't massive, but I do know that if it was let go for another year and the buildings declined that much more, the bill would be that much greater. So to put the money towards throwing it in an account on sidewalks that we're probably paying 10 times too much, it just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Lamb, could I get you to come up for a moment, please? I'm, I'm still hung up on this, these three FTEs. Somewhere along this process, it was discussed, I think at the last meeting, that to some degree, that this was needed to eliminate overtime? Can you sort of explain how that specifically or the addition of these three firefighters would specifically reduce that overtime?
Again, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, for the record. So Councilmember Long, what we were able to do, working with city management, we went back and did a, conducted a staffing analysis. And so what that basically means is when we look at the number of mandatory positions that are required to be on the, on the street every day, working at a fire station. So currently, we're at 57. We've, last time we've done this, it was 2018 and so we went from 46 until now, we're on the precipice of looking at 62 minimum staffing every day from battalion chiefs, firefighters, lieutenants and engineers. And so we did a calculation there, so the number of people it takes to fill one of those seats every day. And so the calculation we came out with was 3.92, so almost four people to fill one of those seats. And so we extrapolate that to look at the number of FTEs that are needed for shift work. We came out to 243 FTEs and then divide that by our three shifts, comes out to 81 individuals per shift. And then we worked on the associated ranks. So with the proposed budget prior to today, it only had 240 FTEs for shift staffing in it. And with today's, it brings it up to 243, which is right on the money for where we need to be, just to maintain our, our minimum staffing.
So you're saying this, this would get us to the 81 or that's the?
That gets us to the 81 per shift, the 243 assigned for operations or, or shift work.
So then that would equate, if you're, if you're factoring in the oncoming Station 13 into that, as far as those figures?
And the additional rescue.
That's, well, that one, then this number might be different, but that would equate to 6.23 per station as far as FTEs?
We do it a little less by station because every station's staffed a little bit differently. Some stations have four, some stations have five or six, depending for battalion chief station there.
Do you know what a typical station's FTE is as far as staffing members at a, at a particular station?
So we do it less per station, it's per?
Well, I know that, but what would be the industry standard? I know that, that it differs or even surrounding municipalities, like for example, what would Fort Myers have per, per shift on a station?
Per shift at a station, there, again, it's gonna depend on each of their, each of their stations or how they staff it. So some of them are gonna have four-person engines, some, some people are gonna have two-person engines at each station. For us, it's about looking at how many, you know, we're trying to cover that seat 24 hours a day, 365. And we also work a 24, the average firefighter works 2,496 hours in a, in a year. That's with their Kelly days and the other piece, that's what they work out to. We've looked at a number of areas, whether it be San Francisco, Atlanta, a number of other departments, even here locally. Some of them don't work Kelly days, some of them have different accruals. And so there isn't really a one-size-fits-all solution for it. So it really is customized to each individual department.
So, so staying on the topic of overtime and, and how this would alleviate the overtime, and I'm not sure whether that's the main justification for, for moving forward with this at this point, at the additional three. You mentioned in a memo that we received yesterday, you referenced the 50% rule for promoted personnel?
Yes, sir.
As far as the minimum staffing?
Mm-hmm.
So does that affect in any way our ability by adding these three FTEs to reduce the overtime if that 50% rule still applies, considering that the three that we're bringing on are firefighters? Would, would firefighters fall under the promoted personnel?
So with this, we've also had conversations with city management that we would look at to appropriately place the different ranks. And so for instance, moving one, having a floater, we call lieutenant, and two floating engineers. We're gonna do that, the plan is, I believe, correct city manager, do that administratively. And that gets us to the staffing model that's recommended there and staffing alternative two. So we end up with 81 FTEs and then we slot them into the appropriate ranks. So it's kind of chicken or egg, do you bring them in as a firefighter and then upgrade them or do you just bring in those upgraded positions? So that gets us, if, if your question is, is that number that we're looking at, it gets the appropriate numbers in the appropriate positions. That may not be conducted directly through the budget and might be done administratively after the fact, but we have the right number of FTEs.
Okay. And the purpose of all this is I want to make sure that we don't rely too heavily on this, the increase of these three to reduce overtime and then at the end of the day, that we don't, we're not successful in that endeavor, especially considering that the previous budget, these, these three were left on the cutting room floor. And so do you happen to remember last, last year, how many FTEs we brought on board in the budget?
Last year, we brought on 18 FTEs, or sorry, 13. Station 13's FTEs were budgeted, last year it was 15 FTEs. The year before that was Station 12 and that was 18 FTEs.
Because if you're looking at the overtime chart that you previously showed us year over year, there's no significant difference in the overtime costs when you factor in that we've added the figures that you just added. So again, if we're making this decision purely on the fact that we want to reduce overtime, I'm not sure that, that, that's a justification that I'm buying into is, is the point I'm making. And I, and I respect that if that's not one of your main justifications, I would love to hear it, but I know that that was brought up, I think by the mayor last time as something that we needed to address and that this would address it. And I'm, and I'm not sure that based on that fact alone, if you look over the years, combined with the FTEs that we brought on each year, the mean stays just about the same all the way across.
So we've had a lot of rapid growth and so being able to catch up with that and being able to see are we properly staffed? So if we're short one person every day, then we're filling that seat with overtime. So I do think that there will be an overtime reduction. I don't think it's gonna be astronomical, but I do believe that we will see some savings there, especially getting people put in the appropriate slots. Not only is it just overtime, it's also looking at mandatory overtime. Because for us, again, we have to have, coming up to 62 people on every day. So if somebody calls off sick and nobody calls in for that overtime voluntarily, they go to the low man on the totem pole, whoever's next and says, you know, congratulations, you have to stay for another 24 hours. And so that hurts employee morale and all the other issues of having that. So having these extra people, especially in those promoted positions, helps reduce that likelihood.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm just trying to get a, a better bearing as to, you know, the decision that we would make as far as adding those. And then with regards to the bay door, you, you referenced, and I'm sure you probably don't have it available, or you would say, but the expense of the maintenance, I mean, how expensive is expensive when we're, when we're countering that against 400 and something thousand dollar bay doors? I mean, what's, what's expensive when we're talking about maintenance costs on a?
Yeah, so I've got staff trying to pull that up for me of what we spend through the, the different door contractors that we have. And so looking at that, again, I understand that there's a number of needs that, that the city is seeing if this, you know, definitely sidewalks for children is a, is a high priority and one that definitely seems like a, a money well spent. So we can look at that, we can pull up the, the numbers and look at that moving into the future, but when we would see that return on investment?
Okay. Thank you. So with that being said, I guess I would, I would pose to you guys, I don't know if there's any appetite for it. I don't know where I would allocate that money, but I would, I would be in support of removing the, the bay doors from the budget that was presented. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah. Councilwoman Long pretty much asked the question that I was gonna ask Chief Lamb. It's about your bay doors, just a few more questions. So the one of the questions was the maintenance, which he already went over and he really didn't have the numbers. But the second question with the maintenance is how often is maintenance on these doors? Is it once every three months, once a year? Is it all the stations, one station? If you could help us with that as well?
Yeah. So we have maintenance based off of an annual try to preventative, preventative maintenance, excuse me, process that we try to do at least annually. And then we have, you know, doors when they break due to a variety of different issues, use, those other things age, that that pops up to be a bit of an issue. Again, it's, we, we work through it and we've, we've worked through it for, for years and so something that definitely is something we, we'd like to see into the future. We're putting these, these doors on Station 13 and so perhaps we'll, we'll see how that station works in, in response to these, these new doors.
If you don't mind me asking another question, last year was there one station where the door broke or got stuck last year?
They, they all break.
So it's, it's a frequent thing?
Yeah, especially with the, the age. We, again, we have several different styles. We have some that are the roll-ups style, as they come up, they have to use a chain if the, if there's an issue with the motor or something goes out. And then there's the other ones where they're more like a residential garage door with the panels, except for they're much taller and heavier. And so we have those on Station 6. Some of our older stations been built in the, the early 90s. Our newer stations, right now, all have those roll-up style. And again, Station 13, we're gonna put in these, these new glass accordion style.
Okay. Because the reason why I'm asking this question is very important. So you're talking about Station 6, so this is a roll-up style, you guys use a chain to pull up. So, you know, you're talking saving lives. So this is my question of what I'm asking with the doors is, is it expensive to replace that door? I know it's very expensive to get this other door that you're looking at, but saving a life is very important. I mean, even taking off that extra minute if you've gotta, you know, pull a chain to open up that.
I just want to clarify, right now, it's still a push button. It, it goes up with a lift. And then that only time we have to do that is if the power and the backup generator fail or we have some type of mechanical issue with that opener. That's when that happens. And so it's not frequent that we have to actually go out there and manually lift those doors.
Okay. And I guess the other question I want to ask you too, I know we're talking about these doors, but it's very important, especially with us doing a budget and we're about to make a decision. So I know Gunter had asked you, the mayor asked you a very important question, is this a want or a need? And, you know, Councilman Long made a valid point on the costs, wouldn't go to something else. But I'm wanting to know if we have a door that doesn't work well and you're constantly doing maintenance on it and that is adding up in dollars, I mean, what, what is the average cost? I mean, there's gotta be like some kind of number of, of what it costs. Is it 15,000, it's a 5,000, 25,000 to, to fix a door? Can you just, I, I know it's not the exact, you know, cost, but can you give us an estimate of what it does cost the city to fix these doors?
So I think that's gonna vary on every, every door. I hate to give that, that answer, but I think it's gonna vary based on every door. Where they're gonna pull up what the RPOs are, I think for some around 50,000 for action door and I think we have a couple others that we're, we're with. Again, I do believe that things we put in the budget are things that are, are needed in the fire department, but this is one that's not gonna be mission critical if this one doesn't happen this year. Another suggestion was looking at some of these, kind of how long do we continue to invest money into, to seeing these things get limped along? And that's kind of what this is, is at what point do we say, hey, we need to make a transition and go to this new style? And that's expensive to do. And again, we understand the doors are still gonna go up, the fire trucks are still gonna go down the road without this, if, if that's the wish of council.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I had a question for our new city attorney, Alex. So. Me or you?
One of us.
So I know you're talking to the mayor about this dollar amount that you're looking at. Do you already kind of have your business plan put together and how you're seeing your department of kind of an idea of what you're wanting and how you want it to look? Because I am in agreement with the mayor and Councilman Stanky, the numbers are very low, at point two four percent underneath. But with that being said, before you answer my question, you know, I'll have a question for the mayor here, once you answer that question.
So, I mean, at this point in time, it's, it's, it's my second day, so I'm still really evaluating really what the demands is, demands are of the city, you know, kind of where, where I think I want the office to go. But I also recognize that, you know, where I think I want the office to go, I have to be mindful of the fact that just logistically, space-wise, I, I can't, I can't do any more people. So I'm very, very mindful of that. And so moving forward, what I'm really focusing on first and foremost is making sure that I've got the ability to retain the people that I have, the ability to retain new people when that, when that occurs and then, and then really just addressing kind of the demands in that regard. So I, to answer your question, I'm, I'm still evaluating it. I have an idea where I'm going with it, but I think it's gonna take a little bit more time for me to really be able to identify the course that I'm gonna be taking for the department.
And the other question I had to ask you, you seemed like you were pretty eager to get this moving forward and I know that our mayor was stating that we can relook at this. And I know that our mayor was stating that we can relook at this here in the near future. I could see it in your face, you're like, I need to get this going. Is this going to hold you up for making things happen in your department? And the reason why I'm asking that question going to the mayor is if we can do what he has asked, even though it's lower, put it at a ninety-day period to get him going in his department, at least helps him to get moving. And then, we can reevaluate everything in ninety days and come back with a business plan or however way he's wanting to put his department with you or with all of us. And we can go over it from there. And if we need to bring it up, which it's obvious, it sounds like, you know, might happen, then we can do that.
And if I may, here's the way I'm really envisioning it. This is the workshop for the next fiscal year. That's not even going to take effect until October one. So, realistically, I'm not going to be even able to have that funds until October one. So, putting that aside, here we are in August. Now, the reason why I brought it forward in August is the last thing I really wanted, because I was not involved in the budgetary process. I kind of was made aware of it, so I really kind of did a quick look to see where we're at, checked out some other municipalities and realized we need to be competitive. And there's a reason why we need to be competitive, because we want quality and want to retain the people that are quality employees. You know, we are your professionals. We're the only ones with Juris Doctor degrees. So, to do that, that's why I did this, recognizing conservatively where I intend on going. I had no intention on giving a sticker shock. I don't think that's appropriate. I needed that full year to really kind of delve into it. It's going to take me time as I've conveyed to some of you, it's going to take me some time to really immerse myself in everything going on with the city of Cape Coral in order to be able to identify with any degree of specificity where I may need additional people. But right now, it's, my concern is, I got a regional area, and I mentioned this to the mayor, and I would have spoken to all of you if I had the time. But I didn't officially become your city attorney until yesterday. I would have let you know that there are other governmental entities that are paying more. And the last thing, I want to be in a situation where I'm losing someone and if I'm losing someone, I can't replace them. And that's really as a result of the market condition. And I'm seeing it and I'm aware of what's happening. You know, I did leave Sarasota County, they're unable to fill my position with what I was making. And the person that they had said it was not enough. So, that's what's going on out there. It's a very, very tight market. And I'm just trying to avoid not putting myself and the city and all of you in a unfortunate situation where I'm left scrambling. That's really it.
Yeah, that goes back to, I think, believe what the mayor was stating is trying to re-under as well as Councilman Stanky, we want the best of the best. And if we have to go up, so you can bring in the best of the best for the legal department.
As I said, I, you know, I wanted to convey to you that I don't look to have any more money. If you're comfortable with that, I have no problem asking for it. But again, I'm trying to be conservative, I really, really am. And then, in being conservative, that's why I said I will hold the line. I know that, you know, here we are on August fifteenth or August sixteenth. You know, I'm going to be spending this time in order to really ascertain what my staff is and making sure where my staff is and who is where in terms of where they need to be. So, I'm going to be taking that, you know, I'm not going to have access to that money tomorrow. That's a given, because the budgetary process is not over. So, that's kind of where my thought process was. I wanted to get it in the forefront to you right now during the workshop process. I did not want to do a, after the budget had done, I didn't want to do an amendment. That was just not really what I thought was a prudent thing to do for you all. I wanted to get it before you, in front of you, and I didn't want there to be a surprise later on down the road. And that's why I did what I did.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Wells.
Thank you. I want to touch on a couple of things that were brought up and hopefully, one of the things might be able to help us move forward. Chief Lamb, the bay doors, I know it's, it is what it is. You don't have to get up, I'm just going to make a comment. I know it's for one fire station and it's four, but I think Councilman Long made a good observation that maybe we don't need four at one station. If another station might be useful as far as response time, getting two of them. And we do put two on one station and two on another. I know you'll do that, that's your job, not ours, but I thought that was a great thought. Whatever it is, you know, we don't need them on the front and back if it's an emergency response team. So, I'm hoping that you look at that. And I'm okay with keeping them in the budget the way they are, but as long as that we're doing it correctly, not just retrofitting one station, you know, to utilize it better. As far as the attorney's budget, the way it is, I'm glad that you added the extra money because it's going to take you some time. And I appreciate that you put it in there and we're not coming back for a bunch of amendment later. If we do need to add more money, we can do an amendment. So, if you find that this isn't enough to keep us competitive and we need to relook at everything, I don't think any of us are going to have a problem coming back and making a budget amendment later. But I'm glad you were able to at least get this in here and get it to our attention. So, I'm okay with the expenditures there. As far as all the talk we've had on sidewalks, sidewalks and city beautification, I don't want to lose sidewalks. So, Mr. City Manager, if we were to move the sidewalk money into a city beautification, could we maybe put a slash on that and put sidewalks as part of city beautification? Because let's say we do get the bid process right and we get a contractor to come in and they're able to provide the sidewalks at a better price. As Councilmember Shepherd was saying, we're not overpaying for them. I don't want to tie up the million dollars that we said no sidewalks, but I also don't want to overpay for them by saying it's only sidewalks. So, is there a way on this line of the funding adjustment that city beautification slash sidewalks, whichever the best bang for the city's buck is for this next year? Do you get what I'm saying? To where it's not put in as only sidewalks, we can just do whatever the best cost analysis is?
Yeah, I think it would take some understanding of how the finance director intends on classifying the funds. Mark, are we just going into like a general transportation capital project fund or is there a specific sidewalk project fund?
We have a specific sidewalk project fund.
So, with the city beautification, is sidewalks eliminated from that? Or can sidewalks still be spent with the city beautification money?
You know, if we just want to put this all into a bucket and say, you know, we'll spend whatever we're going to spend, but I guess the question is, is who, how do we make that determination? In other words, who's making the determination?
If the bids come back really good on sidewalks, do you want to allocate five million, a million of this year plus four million of last year? Or do you want to, so the last thing we want to do is get this wrong and then have the council say, well, you should have spent half of it on sidewalks and half on beautification. So, some of what you all are doing when you appropriate in a budget is you're setting priorities. And so, and you're also communicating to the public what those priorities are. And so, if sidewalks is a majority of your priority, then that's where you ask to put it. If beautification is the majority, then you would ask to put it there.
But it can't be both in one and then choose whatever the best bid is. You know, you notice what I'm trying to say though is, in order to speed up the time and conversation, is there a way to just leave it until we know what the bids are? You know, does it have to be allocated specifically for sidewalks? Or can beautification be a sidewalk? Because to me, putting a sidewalk in is beautifying the city.
Even if we set it aside as sidewalks and the bid comes in too much, we're going to be back talking to you about what to do with the money. So, whether it stays in as sidewalks or it goes into some other name or a combination of names, it's okay to leave it the way it is today, because that is your intent if it's sidewalks. And then, we would come, if bids come in something that are astronomical again and we can't figure out how to make this thing work, then we come back and we talk to you about a different strategy.
And we could always amend it and change it to beautification later.
We do amendments regularly, so can always amend it.
Well, with that being said, I think I'm okay with what is presented today as far as allocating and, you know, not having to go back and forth about this, that, or the other, knowing that we can make an amendment to change these different budgets and go in the direction that's best for the city. So, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
If you look at the history of Cape Coral, what are we stellar for? We're stellar for public safety, first responders. We have the best police department, we have the best fire department. And it's because we invested heavily into them to make sure they're the best. And I think when you read all the articles about our city and they talk about public safety, we're right up there at the top. If we had the money to put them new doors on every single firehouse in the city, our fire chief next year would tell us something else he needs. And he would only do that because that's his job. His job is to be the best and to weigh the variables out of his department and to always look for improvement. It's our job to look at the whole house entirely. So, every year, for the past at least fifteen years that I've been watching these meetings, we have been stellar with public safety. And we fail in beautification. And it's the same thing every year. So, if you were a student and your schoolteacher pulled you aside and said, okay, you're stellar in these two things, but you're failing in this, what do you think needs to be done? Change. We know we're failing in a certain area, but we're not changing the way we respond. We're talking about doors. And, you know, things like that, when that department is stellar, it's the best, we brag about it. But yet, we have other things in our house, I'm looking at the city as our house, where we're failing. And I think that when the whole budget process started, it should say, where are we failing? And what are we going to do this year? And I just see us doing the same thing. And I say us, I say the leadership of the city from the past fifteen years, is I see the same thing happen over and over again, where we know where we're failing and we refuse to act appropriately. So, you know, I'm no way saying that them doors aren't important, don't get me wrong. We have two professionals that run our police department and our fire department, and their job is to be the best. And no matter what we give them, they're always going to come at us with something else to be better. And I want them to do that, that's their job. But I think it's our job to weigh out by looking at the entire house and say, where are we failing and where do we need improvement? So...
So, you're proposing to remove the bay doors? Is that, what I'm trying to get is like, we can sit here and talk and talk and talk, but I just want some solutions.
I'm not saying, I don't want to tell any council person what to do. It's just, I'm just demonstrating a frustration that I have.
So, what's your proposal then, to remove the bay doors from the budget?
If there's any monies extra at all, it should be for improving where we're failing. It's not just trees or medians.
So, is your proposal, remove the four twenty-five and add it to?
There are things around the city that look really bad. And our appearance has everything to do with how successful we are as a city. We have to look good.
I understand that.
Oh, don't, Councilmember, he has the floor. You're more than welcome to have your opportunity when he's done.
So, I don't want to sit here and be the grandstander for trees or palms or medians. I just want to let my fellow councilmembers know that we all get emails, we all have eyes, we all drive around the city, we all read these articles. There, we are failing when it comes to our appearance. And there are a lot of things that we don't have to throw a tremendous amount of money at to have a big response. So, what I'm saying is, you know, we're putting all the extra money towards beautification. Like I said, I don't know the dollar amount that our city spent on what they did at the charter schools, but I know that whatever they spent, it had a big tremendous impact. I would love to have an impact when we enter our city and come over the bridge, you know? I'm not seeing busted up trees and things laying over and benches that haven't been touched in twenty years and pavers that are ripped up and, you know, I mean, I can go on and on. There's just a lot of other things. And I think we have to decide what our priority is for this budget year. What do we want to improve on? And I think it should be what we're failing at. You know, you're not going to, you know, convince our fire chief that them doors aren't important, because they are important and that's his job. You know, he's going to do that and I want him to keep doing that. But I'm just telling us that we have to weigh it all out. There are other parts of the house that need some improvement. And the city manager is only going to do what we push him to do. You know, I mean, look at it, with public safety alone, we're building two training facilities. What city's even doing that? So, we are, you know, when it comes to public safety, we are the champions. But we're failing in other areas. So, we should all be talking about how we can improve in them other areas. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the analogy as it relates to school and doing really well in this class. And so, maybe better do a little more social study work, because you've got to get your social study grade up. Appreciate it, I love the analogy, I'm an analogy guy. So, that certainly got me thinking a little bit too. In the same vein, from an analogy standpoint, it's always going to be cheaper to put a new air conditioner in the car. It's going to cost a lot of money to go buy the new car. So, you do have to come to the point somewhere along the way where you say, yeah, it'd be cheaper if I keep fixing it. But at one point in time, road meets the road and you say, all right, I just got to buy the new car and bite the bullet. So, and whichever way you go with that, I can go either way with that. I did want to put some, just some dollars and cents to our whole legal department. And Alex, you're at a disadvantage coming to this, you know, at the point that you are where you weren't able to have everything prepared at the beginning of the budget cycle to prepare for the city manager to be included. So, but I just wanted some numbers. I was shocked, absolutely shocked, at, with your addition that we just go to point two-four. And I look at the other, I did some quick math. The anomaly in the group is Tallahassee. I don't know if that's because you have a lot of, you know, young attorneys coming out of FSU there that maybe they can hire people for less than somewhere else. But the others seem to be a little more congruent. But even if you keep Tallahassee in the average, if we just take the average of those five that we have the number, the average is point five-seven-six. Budget to budget, what that means is if we were just average with those other five examples, it would be six-point-three million dollars in our budget. The point two-four percent that your additional dollars would bring us to is two-point-six-three million. So, the difference, if I just look at the averages, is three-point-seven million. I don't know necessarily that we want to rely upon just an amendment down the road if all of a sudden we find that we are way out of class with, you know, where we are prepared legally within our city. So, I would highly encourage you to get the numbers as quickly, you know, together as quickly as you can. As the mayor said, you know, we want to be in the seventy-fifth percentile. And so, in that whole seventy-fifth percentile, maybe the numbers will change some from where we are here. But man, the sooner you get those together, the better off I think we would be to be dealing with this realistically. Because that's just not a little, oh, let me find some spare change in one pocket to go ahead and make up the difference. That's a significant amount of money. It's more than twice what we're currently budgeting.
And to answer your question, there are four lawyers in Tallahassee that are one year of service. That's why the numbers are lower. They're all over a hundred though, but there are four of them that have that. And again, and I go back, these other municipalities have more staff. And, and that's something that, you know, we may get that conversation, but I can't have that conversation with you now. I need the year in order to figure that out, because we may not have enough staff considering the overall city budget and how big the city is and the demand associated with it. You know, and I go back to my previous place on the East Coast, you know, we, we have, you know, we had a dedicated police legal advisor, we had dedicated prosecutors that prosecuted municipal ordinance violations. It's by far a greater, greater entity in terms of what is done for the governmental operations. That may be something what you may wanna do, I'll be more than happy to have that conversation with all of you. It's again, I, I know what I heard from you folks in terms of where you want the city to be, and I wanna make sure that I accomplish that endeavor for you. But it's, there's logistics involved, and so that's why I wanna have that conversation.
Sure.
And as, and as regards to the numbers, like I said, I am just trying to be competitive, and that's why competitive and conservative, because I need the one year to really look at things and really make a determination where, what our next steps are going forward.
Well, and just what you just said, I think ties into Councilmember Shepherd's issues and, and the number of times that you've heard it up here about city beautification. If in fact, we need more prosecutors as it relates to people following the rules for the ordinances that keep our city beautiful, that they don't, they don't do now, then that could be one of the areas where, hey, that's a position we're missing, or a interdepartmental department of yours that needs to be beefed up if we wanna be able to keep up with the citizens' responsibility to add to the beauty to our city. So I just, I just think, I think that's something that we should hit as quickly as possible so that we're at least on par for our ability to manage the city legally while we're putting our efforts in all the other areas as well. We're dealing with less than one percent of the budget, like, a lot less than, you know, so, and so whatever we gotta move there, if that makes us, you know, A, more competitive to have the best people, B, have the staff that we need to fulfill the responsibilities that allow the game plan to come to fruition, then I think that's a key component here that maybe was a sleeping giant that none of us were aware of.
And I believe that this is the first step in, to that endeavor. And, and that's why I did, and again, I, I did a very, very mindful of that I am new, recognizing that I'm gonna need the year to really immerse myself in everything, you know, have the consistent conversations with all of you on a regular basis and to see where is it that you want this city to go, 'cause I think I know. And I'm, and, and I've got the tools, and I've got the knowledge, and we can make it all happen, and it's just gonna be a matter of, you know, the consensus of the entire council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, sorry about that earlier, I was just trying to get direction from Councilmember Shepherd as far as what he wanted to do in order to add more to the beautification budget. So I was, you know, we're here to discuss not what we think is best for a city, but how we're gonna allocate these dollars. So would, I understand, we do need to beautify more, I understand that maybe we're not spending the money in the sidewalks, but I was just hoping just to get direction as to what his thoughts were. Was he looking to remove the bay doors at 425,000 and add it to beautification? And would that be the direction we give the city manager for our final budget meeting before we adopt this budget, or are we just gonna talk about how we need to do more and not have a solution? So I was just trying to get to the solution of this funding adjustment, so that's what I was trying to get at, thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
Thanks, Mayor. One correction from what a councilmember said, it was never said during this meeting by staff or anyone that we overpaid for sidewalks. So let's, let's get that straight right away. What was said is we didn't wanna overpay for sidewalks with the latest bid that came in. And we're gonna go out for bid again, and hopefully we'll find an amount that works for us and we can continue with the project, which in no way, shape, or form or makes the sidewalk budget stagnant, because it is gonna go out for bid again, and hopefully we can continue to move forward with that project. If our crews can't do it, or if the bids can't come in too high, or if the curbing crew can't be reallocated at some different point and it looks like that money is gonna sit there, then we can have that conversation later on, but I'm not gonna jump the gun here at all and say that that money isn't gonna be used, 'cause we are, we are way far away from that. On the idea of putting a slash between sidewalks and beautification, one has to do with beauty, other has to do with safety, and I guarantee you, I will always choose safety over beauty anytime. If you have an unsafe city, no one is gonna come here to live, regardless of what the trees or the curbing or the landscaping looks like. Mr. City Attorney, I appreciate the fact you identified a need right away, you reacted to it, you certainly need the time to evaluate what's happening with your staff, where we're gonna go with how we pursue our legal matters, and where we stand in terms of being competitive with the rest of the state. It's always difficult, because you have to be licensed in the state of Florida to serve here, so it's not like you're, you're bringing in attorneys from other places, which limits you a little bit anyway. If, you know, the fire chief mentioned that, you know, they'll continue to provide great responses, no matter what doors are on their fire stations, and if there's a better use for that money currently, then we'll find a place for it. If there isn't, then at some point, if the doors are breaking down, I think we have to look at that as a serious need for at least, for at least one of the fire stations. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. Councilman Hayden, I, I feel that, I think we're all about the safety here, safety does come first, especially in my book, but if you would, if you were paying attention to what they were saying, the monies are not being used right now for the sidewalks. I'm all for the sidewalks, I really am. But if the monies are just sitting there, then let's utilize the funds on something else that the city needs. So I believe that's what they're saying, so I wanna make sure that you understand that safety is number one in my book, always. But if we're not using the funds, let's allocate them towards something else. So I just wanted to clarify that. And also, what I like to say to Councilwoman Welsh, I think it was rude that you were interrupting him, because he was sharing his opinion and his viewpoints. When you share your opinions and your viewpoints, we let you speak. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, okay, I will clarify. I think we did some great things already, we, I think the most important thing in our city is our tool belt, our tool belt are our workers. We made sure that we, we stepped up to the plate and we gave them an increase that we were able to do, and that was very important. I think for our legal department to be successful, we need to give them the funds they need to be successful. I, I don't wanna invest in, in not being successful, I only wanna invest in being successful. So I want our legal department to have the funds they need to be successful, like we were with the rest of our employees of the city, by giving them the monies they needed to be successful. So, you know, my opinion is, any extra money should go to beautification, and there's all types of things at the beautification, it's just not trees and plants and things like that. It's driving around the city, there's a lot of things that just need to be improved on, because our image is part of the whole package of being able to afford, to pay our tools, which are our city staff, the couple thousand people that work for the city, being able to afford to pay them what they need to get paid. Our city has to have a value. So it's a fine balance, Councilmember Hayden. And the balance is keeping the value high and the safety high, not just keeping the safety high and ignoring the value. It's a full package, and I'm saying we're failing in one location, and to me, all the extra monies should go towards where we're failing. And I think, and like I said, I think we, I wouldn't even mind giving more money to the legal department, because we're, we're not even bringing them up to where they should be, we're just getting them on the page. And I, and I, I'm not for that, I'm for being the best that we can be. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, do we have any funds that are similar to the sidewalk fund, where we didn't spend it and it rolled over? I'm sure we do, many, right?
The only funds that are eligible to roll over are capital project funds, operating funds at the end of the year, finance sweeps, and go into a fund balance.
Road paving?
Road paving, capital project fund?
Generally speaking, they've been encumbered, and so they'll, if we haven't spent it all in the, by the end of the year, the encumbrance rolls into the next year.
So this happens in, in budgets? It's not abnormal, it's not unheard of, and it doesn't mean that we take that money and spend it on something else, because we weren't able to spend it the year before, right? We keep it for what it's intended for. Okay, I just wanna make that point, when it comes to the sidewalks. Is the median beautification funds in that category too?
Yes, ma'am, they're in capital project funds.
Did we have any rollover?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my point is made, thank you.
I think, you know, out of all this discussion, it sounds like the two items of contention to some degree are the bay doors and the sidewalk, and I guess you add beautification into that. So, you know, when it comes to the firefighters, I think Councilman Long had brought up a few points regarding that. One thing I think maybe would be helpful for all of our meeting, meetings in the future, mainly because of what Councilmember Long had mentioned earlier in the, in the meeting was, you know, it's some points in time, council individually bring up either recommendations or desires that he or she may have. And that's all well and good, but as we all know, we make a decision collectively as a body here. So I think that something that may be a good practice for us in the future, no matter if it's a budget meeting, regular meeting, Cal meeting, is maybe at the end of the meeting to, you know, have a discussion on, to make sure we all are on the same page on a particular topic that one of us may have mentioned. That way, the city manager knows exactly what the direction is. And I think that's maybe a question that you may wanna ask us at the end of the meeting, 'cause what I don't wanna happen is just because one or two individuals may mention one particular thing, then the city manager acts upon it. I think we have to have a consensus by majority. You know, just because there's, there's a silence of other members, that doesn't mean there's a consensus. So we wanna make sure that we know exactly, moving forward, what that consensus is as a collective body. I think that will, I think that'll help us all, moving forward. So that was just something I, I picked up earlier in the conversation. As far as the budget's concerned, I think, like I said, the two items, you know, of contention, I think is the sidewalks and the bay doors. You know, for me, for the sidewalks, hey, if we could throw a hundred million dollars at sidewalks, great. But if we can't spend a hundred million dollars, why are we throwing a hundred million dollars at the sidewalks? Or anything in this city. And history has shown us over the last two years, we have spent a very small percentage of the monies that we've allocated. So I think question number one is regarding the bay doors and the sidewalks, do we wanna keep them in there, or do we wanna move them somewhere else? If we're going to, what's our preference? And I think that's the consensus of the discussion that I heard from all of us, is that was the biggest items that we've talked about. So do we just go down the line and try to give the city manager the direction, or just say, "Hey, look, I'm fine with what's presented here today," and, and we'll move forward? And try to get a consensus going down the line? With that, I'll, I'll open it up, I see Councilmember Long put his light on, so I'll let him make a remark on that, and then maybe we can just go down the line and give the city manager the direction he's hopefully looking for.
Yeah, my remark wasn't necessarily on that last point, it was on your, your first point, we're talking about procedural notes, I think in hindsight, it would've been a heck of a lot easier and saved a lot more time to say, "Hey, we got three million dollars, how do you wanna spend it?" And then we're not in a position where someone like myself is, is fighting to try to maybe get something removed, rather than saying, "Hey, it's already been included." That would just be my note, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cosden, I guess maybe we'll start with you up there, and we just kinda work down the list here, so we can hopefully get this wrapped up.
Yes and yes?
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure what or two yeses or four. Are, are all?
Bay doors and sidewalk.
Okay, and so if those are the only two, then are we all then saying that we agree with the other ones?
Yeah, unless you...
I'm looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven...
Well, this is your opportunity, let's try to get this vetted out, so...
Just those two?
Well, unless you have some other ones?
Well, no, I think it's a fair question, if we're only giving a vote on those two...
Well, let's get through those first.
If there's any other ones, there's no vote of contention on those.
Right. I, I haven't really heard a whole lot of discussion on any other topics the last hour and a half, but the bay doors, beautification and sidewalks. And the attorney.
We had the three firefighters and how much overtime, and do we hire instead of just keep paying the overtime? So, everything came up.
Okay.
But I'll vote on the two. And is the yes vote that you wanna keep it in?
Yes.
Or if not, where do you wanna reallocate it?
Okay.
Mayor, if I may...
Yes, sir.
So we're not voting, right?
No, no. We're just having a discussion, a consensus, we're looking for a consensus...
My second day as city attorney, I should know you're not voting.
Unless we're talking about his budget, and then that could be a different answer.
I would be in favor of keeping both of them where they are.
Okay.
Now and then.
And do you have a preference where you wanna put them?
Beautification.
For me personally, you know, the bay doors really hasn't, I could go either way on that, really, I mean, I don't, I, it sounds more of a want than a need, I tried to get that, tried to get that difference, but I, I'm okay if we wanna leave the bay doors in there. Sidewalks, you know, for me, I just really don't think that we're gonna spend the extra million dollars. We already have four sitting there, and since this is a yearly budget, you know, I'm looking forward to get the best return on our investment for the monies we have. If we can't spend the extra million dollars, I don't wanna put it somewhere just to put it over here in this pot and let it sit there, so I would say I would probably wanna move the sidewalk money to, not necessarily medians, but city beautification. I think that is a very broad statement, that could be used many different ways. And then if, I would rather come back for a budget amendment, if it's, Mr. City Manager comes back and says, "Hey, we're doing a great job on the sidewalks and we're, we're gonna spend all that four million and we can use more," then, I know Mr. Mason will be back here on a quarterly basis for a budget modification, so I would reevaluate it then. So that would be my preference.
You can't spend it if it's not there, so, yes and yes.
Yes on the bay doors, 'cause it is the future, and we are not, it's not like we're retrofitting all of them, so I think we do need to start getting that at least budgeted and towards it. Like I said earlier, if, if it goes sidewalks or city beautification, it's fine with me either way, whatever we can spend the best dollars on, but I also know that we can always come back and add more money to sidewalk. So if, if that moves, it's not gonna be the end of the day for me. So I guess yes and half, half yes? Either, either or, so yes and yes, or yeah, that's fine with me.
The bay doors, I'm, I'm good with them or without them, but I, I think it'd be good if he had them, 'cause of, you know, see the top there. As far as sidewalks goes, I'm all for the sidewalks, however, we cannot be using the money right now for the sidewalks, because of inflation and the cost of everything, so I'm all for putting it towards beautification, just cleaning the city up, making it look better, absolutely, 110%, so, thank you.
No and no, I don't necessarily have a preference where the sidewalk money goes, but if the consensus is to move it to beautification, then I would not oppose that.
Yeah, and the only thing I wanted to kinda re...
Yeah, and the only thing I wanted to kind of reiterate what Councilmember Shepherd said earlier today was, you know, I think over the last couple of years, I think we've really, we've really tried to express an interest to make our city look better. And I think back in our, our winter retreat, I made this statement. We can talk a good game all we want, but unless we put dollars towards it, we'll never achieve what our goals are. It's as simple as that. So, I, you know, if making our cities look good is going to be a priority, we can sit here and wish it all day, but if we don't put dollars to it, it doesn't really matter. We're wasting all of our time just talking about it. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, just one thing I forgot to add. Councilmember Shepherd, you mentioned we were failing. You can make a really strong case that we've been failing at sidewalks, too. 8% is not a good number. We're not much higher than that now. So, to think that sidewalks has become a success story is wrong. So, I'd certainly put sidewalks, although we're making progress in the failing category right now. Thanks.
Mr. City Manager.
Okay. Bay doors are in. Based on Councilmember Welsh and Cummings' support of sidewalks, but would like it to be in beautification, that leaves us on a, on a 4-4 on the sidewalks. You were, it was a solid no. Okay. So, we're, we're at basically a 4-4 on the sidewalk issue. Do you want me to, so-
Who are the four that supported sidewalks? I don't think there were four.
So, I have Cosd, Hayden, Steinke, and I have Welsh as well as a yes.
He said no.
I said either way, pretty much. So, if sidewalks are out this year, we can always amend them if we get better pricing. So, if there's money in there, it's, I mean, or we even them up, we split the difference, you know, since we're at a 4-4. Do we not say $1 million? Do we say $500,000 in sidewalks and move 500 to medians at that point? This way, we're not underfunding sidewalks, but we're just taking some away? Does anyone have an appetite for that of the dissenters that want to keep it in? If we, instead of doing a million, we said 500,000, and then move the rest to beautification, would that sway any of the other three?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there any, do we want to poll again? Because there's another person that's okay with that, allocating 500 instead of a full million, knowing that we're having trouble spending it, but we're still not removing it completely.
You can't put sidewalks up.
Yeah, I think we can. If you want to poll again, that's fine. I know for me personally, the reason I said no to sidewalks didn't have anything to do with sidewalks. It was, I didn't think we could spend the monies. That, that was, so to me, you know, I don't think we can spend an extra 500 or an extra million. But we can go down the list.
I hit, I hit my deal. I'm the, I'm the flipper. So-
No. That's hard to believe.
Sorry.
So, I, I am okay, I'm okay switching my vote to a no on the sidewalks, with the understanding, just like you said, I am absolutely positive that it will be eight yeses if six months from now, we're way ahead on what we thought we could actually put out there as far as sidewalks are concerned, and, and Mark and Mike come to us and say, "Hey, we need another $1 million for sidewalks." You can already pre-vote me for yes. Then if we, if we can get ahead of it, then we can actually build them, I will, I would be all in favor of an amendment at that time. So, I will, I will switch my vote to a no on the sidewalks.
Okay. So, then the only question is, there was a definite direction on where not to put it. Is there consensus to put it in beautification?
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Very well.
And Councilmember Steinke, I get, I think you've already-
That was me.
Councilmember Cummings, you okay now?
Good now. Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Manager, does that give you the direction you're looking for?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And let's talk, I know we have a tentative date scheduled for next week. It sounded like we kind of resolved everything here. Does council think we need an additional budget hearing date for next week? Or, Mr. City Manager, do, I guess first, I'll let you answer that question, and then-
We do not.
Okay. Council, okay with, with that? All right. Again, just like we said the other day, Mr. Mason, just want to thank you and your staff for all your hard work this budget season. Seemed to be a little smoother this year for a variety of reasons. But I know you guys started on this early, and I just want to thank you and your staff for all your hard work.
And I would like to thank all of you for your input in helping us get to where we are today. Thank you.
Okay. Next, item seven, is a time and place of future meeting. Have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council, scheduled for Wednesday, August 16th, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.